Please hold, your meeting has been...
Good afternoon. We welcome to the afternoon session of the Winchester City Council Development Control. Good afternoon, Mr Donoghue, you're the only person that is new to the agenda. No fire practice is planned. And, assembly point in Abbey Gardens, microphone, microphones in front of you, you know all that. And if you could turn your mobile phone off or put it on silent. And this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. And also there's a video recorder being made which will be uploaded to the city council's YouTube after the meeting. So we, the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item 12, 21/00163/FUL, which is the construction of one dwelling adjacent to 21 Ashling Park Road, and the provision of parking for the new and the existing property at 21 Ashling Park Road. And this application is in Denmead, the address we've already stated. The case officer is Rose Lister. And when you're ready, Rose, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. So here we have the red line plan. As you can see, to the north is Barn Green Close and Ashling Park Road is to the west. Behind this row of houses here, just opposite the site, there is a park and the parking for that can be seen here, at the point of the cursor. So here we have the proposed site plan. The existing hedge is for the most part retained. The existing parking that currently serves 21 Ashling Park Road is retained here and will serve the new dwelling. There is a small gap in the hedge for a footpath here leading to the new dwelling. And along Ashling Park Road, another access to serve the existing dwelling at number 21 would be here. Here we have a proposed street scene from Barn Green Close. And again, a proposed street scene from Ashling Park Road. Here we have the proposed elevations. At the top on the east and south elevations, these are the two elevations that would face the two neighbours. And Condition 6 has recommended that the two first floor windows would be obscure glazed. Here we have the proposed floor plans. And then we move on to some photos of the area. At the top, we see a photo of the site from the corner of Ashling Park Road and Barn Green Close. Underneath that, we have a view of the site from Ashling Park Road, looking towards Barn Green Close. At the top here, we have a view of the site with the existing access on to Barn Green Close. And underneath, we have a brief internal view of the site. The recommendation is to permit. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have one public speaker who's in fact the agent in Donoghue. And you have three minutes, Mr Donoghue, and I know you know how it all works. And the clock will start, once you start speaking, we'll put this back to three o'clock, once you start. So when you're ready.
Okay, Chairman, councillors, thank you for the opportunity to speak on this item. By way of background, when I first looked at the site with the applicant and saw the extent of the side garden, it was evident that the site was capable of development. The applicant though thought the site could accommodate three houses. However, I thought that three houses was overdevelopment and would probably get two houses on the site. Consequently, an application was originally submitted for two houses. During the course of the application, I discussed the scheme with the case officer, who agreed that the site was capable of development, but that one house would fit better on the site. I did try to persuade the case officer that two dwellings would work, but she wouldn't budge. I must admit though that in preparing the amended scheme for one dwelling on the site, it became obvious, in terms of scale, design and space about the building, that one dwelling was a much better solution for this site. The revised design for the single dwelling took account of the neighbour objections. This to ensure that there was no loss of privacy to adjoining neighbouring properties. That sufficient garden space was retained and onsite car parking provided. The case officer's report confirms that there will be no detrimental impact upon neighbouring properties. Chairman councillors, the proposal complies with the relevant national and local planning policies and I ask that you support the officer's recommendation and grant planning permission. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Donoghue. Members, any questions for Mr Donoghue? councillor Rutter?
The parking spaces are sort of tandem spaces, aren't they? I thought we had a policy that said that cars should enter and leave in a forward gear. I don't think that's going to be possible in this case, is it? Is that a generally accepted, is it a very quiet road? Is that, or I don't, otherwise they're going to have to reverse into the road, aren't they?
The actual situation is no different from any other property actually on Ashling Park Road. Most of the cars actually do reverse out onto the highway from the car parking spaces. And also, the council's highway engineer is no objection to the proposal.
Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you Chair. I have a horror of tandem parking in garages. Can you tell me what the width of that garage is? Because at the end of the day, what we don't want to see is a useless waste of space which is not functional for taking the width of modern cars in and especially the furthest one being non-used and used as a storage room instead.
Councillor, they're not actually garages, they're just parking spaces.
I beg your pardon, it wasn't clear. Thank you.
Any further questions? So we'll move to the report, which starts on page 189 and then goes on for two pages plus the conditions. Take questions on any part of it. Councillor Reid?
Thank you Chairman. I'm looking at the second drawing, which shows the proposed property in outline format. I went and looked at the property yesterday. The county council have already marked up the curving. And they've identified six four inch curving lengths for the drive, which will actually take it past the porchway to the north. So half of the hedge that's shown there will not be there. I'm just concerned about that. And the other one is obviously the pedestrian entrance to the house, the proposed house, will also have to be opened up. But that's only a very small entrance. It's the one on Ashling Park Road that worries me as to why that is shown when it's obviously not going to be anywhere near that length.
Thank you, we don't have a landscape report, but it does refer to breaks in the boundary treatments, doesn't it?
That's correct. So the proposed width of hedge to be removed along Ashling Park Road is approximately four metres wide. I can't tell you how long that is in highways terms for the drop curb, but it could very well be that they've put in a larger area because this is opposite the entrance to the parkway. So for prams, wheelchairs and things, additional access could have been considered more likely.
I did look at other driveways Chair and they all appear to be of a similar nature. But of course, this one has to have a sightline.
Is this something that needs to be covered in a condition, a landscape condition? There isn't one, but...
We could include one for the retention of the hedge as shown on the approved plans, Chair.
I'm not an officer, but I wouldn't have thought that would have met the planning requirements by Hampshire County Council.
Chairman, I think, I mean, it's obviously shown as a hedge and we've got, the condition requires the development to be undertaken in accordance with the approved plans. And the Highway Authority have powers to require people to trim hedges back or down if they interfere with the visibility displays. So I don't feel too concerned about that Chair. I mean, if you wanted to, we could condition retention or suitable replacement if it dies. You know, up to a sort of, I mean, normally, I mean permitted development rights for fencing on the front edge is normally up to sort of a metre and then it doesn't interfere with visibility displays at that point anyway. So, you know, we take your cue. I mean, I'm not too concerned, but if you wanted a retention or replacement, then we could add a condition on that.
You're the one that's brought it up, for you, would you like it?
Well Chairman, I'm just, I will bring this up in debate. But the retention of, or the loss of so much hedge will have an adverse effect on the overall view of Ashling Park Road, which in general relies on its landscaped hedges most of the way down.
I take your point, but the parish council haven't objected. It is mentioned in the, no, it's not mentioned in the objective, is it? Well, we'll leave that sort of to be decided, I think.
Yeah, on the same subject though, looking at the drawings, there's no, that I can see, there's no measurements on it that tells me how much hedge they're going to take out or leave. So we'd have to be a lot more exact than just saying the sort of words that are being proposed.
It does say that the existing gap in the hedge for the existing parking space, which is what's being retained for the house, is all that there is required, apart from a small gap a bit further up for the gateway to a footpath. So the implication in the papers, as I read it, was that no hedge apart from the bit where the footpath is going to be, which is presumably about a metre, has kind of come out.
Exactly. So there's no, why condition something, there's no need to condition.
Rose, do you want to make a comment here?
Thank you Chair. So in regard to the hedge, it would be a similar size to the existing that would be removed to accommodate the new parking for the retained house. So this would be approximately four metres wide. And that's include, that's to retain the visibility displays as well, as required by the Hampshire highways. In general, I considered that the majority of the hedge would be retained and therefore the green character of Ashling Park Road would be retained and the loss wouldn't be a significant harm to warrant a reason for refusal.
Should there be a condition, I'm just looking for Catherine to see whether she says this is reasonable, that the hedge should be not, well, I don't know how to phrase it, but the only removal of the hedge should be according to the highway requirements, something like that, which ensures that, you know, that the bulk of the hedge will remain. I take the point about the greening of that road. But can, is it a reasonable condition to require the hedge to stay but can be removed for highway access?
Chair, is not the hedge part of the planning application? Therefore, what we see before us is what we're voting on, we don't have to condition it.
I'll just ask our legal officer a question.
That was exactly what I was going to say, councillor Evans, was if it's part of the planning application itself and I'll turn to offices for that, then yes, it is reasonable. And if the problem is the highways, then it is also reasonable to request that it be removed just for that reason. So Julie, could you assist councillor Evans on that?
Yeah, thank you Chair, I think just going back to what I said earlier, we could add a condition that says existing hedge to be retained. And in the event it dies, damage is removed, then replacement should be provided, you know, and we can agree those details. So I'd be quite comfortable with that as a condition Chair.
And we have the agent here and I don't suspect he's got any intention of removing the hedge, no. Anyway, it would be good to have it in the condition. Okay, so any more questions on the report? Debate? Councillor Reid?
Chairman, yes, my only, the only reason I raised the hedge situation is based on the markings on the ground for Hampshire County Council, which will remove half of the existing hedge that's left on this diagram in front of number 21. And that's the only reason I raised it, because the two didn't, to my mind, gel. These properties were built as semi-detached properties with a central pathway leading to doors on either side. And basically what I believe 21 is going to do is take up their part of the footway and it's going to become a parking space. With regard to the rest of the hedge, there's no problem. But there will be a need to punch through a small opening for a pedestrian gate onto the footway. I can't see anything wrong, in fact, I would probably say about 20 years ago, I wonder why they haven't built on that plot of land yet? Because I know the history of it was used as a little garden, basically to grow their own food. So I've got no problems with the officer's recommendation. Just a little query that I hope the agent has picked up with regard to that hedge on 21.
So your concern is that are the markings, which obviously have been put down by the county council?
It's a busy road. It's the main recreation site for getting laid. It also has lots of early accommodation at the far end of it. White wings, which is the council property, is at the bottom. So there is a wonderful lot of traffic on the road, it's not a foot traffic at all.
Well, highways shouldn't be removing the hedge if there's not a need, should they?
Oh no, the hedge refers to the new driveway for 21.
I think Chairman, the plans show what we would be granting permission for. Anything, any deviation from that would require permission when it's development. So I think if the markings that the Highway Authority would put out would have been on the public footway probably and it's beyond the application sites, it's sort of really beyond our control. But what we've got shown is how the two tandem parking spaces would operate for the new and the existing in front of the existing dwelling. You know, and they sort of turn the corner, don't they?
But the hedge presumably belongs to the application site.
It's in the red line site Chair, yes. That would be, that's why we can add that condition that's reasonable, which is why we're content to recommend that to you.
Well, say Hampshire highways take no notice of that condition. Councillor Rutter?
Sorry Chair, Hampshire highways won't be taking the hedge out, will they? They'll just be lowering the curb, that's the indication that they've made. So I don't think that's an issue.
No, I think what councillor Reid is saying is they've marked out the footway with the curb edging to show the extent that they're going to drop it. And obviously, that's wider than the entrance point shown here, which is what you, you know, you normally get at a modern highway displays where they're dropping the curb. And I think Rose was saying, you know, and they're trying to make sure that there's an appropriate level so as you don't just drop down and then try and get back up. So the aggress would be a smooth transition for those using the public highway and footway.
So they don't refer to the hedge at all?
No.
Good to clear that up. Any further debates, councillor Reid, do you want to go back?
No.
Oh no. Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair. I think we should be supporting this application because right at the end it says, 'The proposal accords with the development plan, the Denmead neighbourhood plan', what more could you wish for? Why should we support it?
Yes, this is true, that was Rose's last slide. Councillor Rutter?
Yes, thank you Chair, of course I will be supporting this. Again, there's no paragraph on ecology or how we're going to improve the environment with this development. And I wondered if we could put in a condition asking for SWIFT boxes or a SWIFT box? That would be great, thank you.
Can I make a...
I didn't prompt this.
Can I make a comment on that? If SWIFT boxes and such like are all well and good if the things are in the area already. And I think we need to know that before we demand every building has a SWIFT box on it.
If you build them, they will come.
I don't want to get into debate about this, but the problem is that SWIFTs have declined by 58%. So, you know, they wouldn't be there, you know, because they're not there anymore. But anyway, councillor Rutter has asked a question, an ecological question. We can mention it to our landscape team.
Chairman, I don't, there wouldn't be a requirement really for an ecology report on this site. It's someone's garden land, so it's really beyond that. And the biodiversity net gain isn't a factor at this stage, although we've had it voluntarily on some of the earlier schemes because it included the ecology. I think comfortable to add a condition to recommend, maybe we should add it as an informativeness, we've talked to the agent. I'm not sure what the SWIFT population is like in this locale, whether there's some SWIFT bricks or boxes.
Chairman, we'd have no objection to put in a SWIFT box.
Thank you.
Okay, so that's SWFTs dealt with.
Thank you.
Anything else in debate? So this application has been recommended for approval with the addition of one condition about the hedge, which should only be taken out according to the plans that we're probably about to approve. So all those in favour of approving this application, please show.
That's unanimous Chair.
Thank you, so that application is approved, thank you. So we move on to the next item. Thank you, Mr Donoghue, thank you for coming along. And we'll just wait while, yeah, we have public speakers of just one, so we need to sanitise them. Is he coming in special?
Is he coming in special?
He's just going to join us on team, Chair specially. I'll pull him in because he's forgotten to come to the office.
He really forgot, didn't he?
No, he didn't, I know. He's completely forgotten what he said. He said, you spoke to him really nicely last day and he didn't want any more time on the way. Chair would be disappointed if she couldn't get to the...
I am disappointed because I've got a minute, okay?
Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned. 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 Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned.
We now move on to Agenda Item 13. Quick reminder of health and safety. No fire drill expected, so if the siren or whatever goes off, then that's for real. Please follow instructions. Could you, the assembly point is Abbey Gardens. Could you turn your mobile phones off please or put them on silent? And just a reminder that this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed. And they are also video recording the meeting and that will be uploaded to the city council's YouTube after the meeting. So we now move to Agenda Item 13, which is Case Number 20/02165/FUL. And this is Fairgon Black Horse Lane Shedfield. And this is a retrospective planning application for raised terracing, as the site is on sloping land and was not shown on the original planning application. And the client has moved the garage from its original position, as shown in the original application, and is also retrospective. So the case officer was Nicola Clayton, but she's not well at the moment, so Rose Lister has taken over. And when you're ready, Rose, we're ready to hear the presentation.
Thank you Chair, I just want to draw your attention to the update sheet where the description of development has been clarified and is as you see it on the presentation slide rather than on the committee report. And there have also been a few changes made to the committee presentation, which you will see. So here is the red line plan. The site is highlighted in a hatched pink with a yellow boundary. Solomon's Lane is to the north and Black Horse Road, Black Horse Lane, sorry, is to the east. Here you can see the proposed block plan on the left hand side of the screen. The revised garage location is approximately two metres closer to the neighbour to the south. And the raised patio, you can see a darker line at the point of the cursor running around three sides of the building here. On either side, the patio on the south and north elevations are approximately 1.2 metres wide. And the raised terrace to the south is approximately 10 metres from the boundary with the neighbour to the south. To the north, it's approximately four metres. Here we have the proposed elevations. The new dwelling itself, the elevations have not changed from the previously approved 2016 application, but these do include the raised platform as well as the level changes that are on site. At its highest point on the south elevation, at the rear elevation, sorry, not the south elevation, on the bottom left hand side, the highest point of the raised platform is approximately 2.4 metres and the railing is 1.2 metres above that. Here are some photos of the raised platform. This is viewed from the north west corner of the garden. You can see there is some screening that has been put up along the northern elevation and you can just see that some planting has been put in place to increase the screening to the neighbour to the north. And here is another photo of that screening, looking down to the west of the site. Here we have some photos of the south elevation, the walkway here. And this underneath, on the bottom, is the view from that side passageway over to the neighbouring property to the south. And here we have a photo from the neighbouring property to the south, looking towards the new dwelling and the raised platform. Here we have a view from the rear of the property. You can see the raised platform on the left-hand side on the top photo here. And you can see the roof of the neighbour's property as well. This is the neighbour to the south. And on the bottom here, from the view from the patio area, or the raised patio area, looking towards the neighbouring property. And here we have a view from the raised platform looking west across the field to the rear. Here we have some elevations of the approved garage. These have not been changed from the original application. And here we have some photos of the sighting of the proposed garage. At the top, this is the view from the road. And at the bottom, this is approximately how far it is from the hedge. You can see there is a little bit of protection for the hedge here. And here we have a view from within the site looking towards the road where the garage is being placed. And finally, we have a view from the neighbour to the south looking towards the new dwelling and the position of the new garage, which would be approximately here where the red arrow is showing. The recommendation is to approve.
Thank you. We have one member, the public, that is an objector Alexandra Webb. Good afternoon. And the clock will come up on the screen. There's an example of it and we'll count down from three minutes. If you are still talking at the end of three minutes, I shall ask you to finish your sentence. So when you're ready, the clock will start. Over to you.
Thank you Chairman. Members, my name is Alexandra Webb from Southern Planning Practice. I'm representing Mr and Mrs Walsh who reside at the Spring to the south of this application site and object to the proposal. Despite being asked twice by enforcement officers to stop, the applicant has continued to keep on building without the benefit of planning permission, showing a complete disregard to the planning system. The existing topography of the site has not been shown on any submitted plans. The ground level of the application site is much higher than the Spring and significant amounts of infilling have already taken place, as you can see. The resultant development is harmful in terms of its visual impact and not appropriate in this rural setting. Submitted block plans do not show the correct footprint of the buildings as exists and the photographs shown in the officer's presentation are considered to be a bit misleading. There's no photograph showing the direct line of sight from the terrace into my client's kitchen diner window, despite these being provided to the case officer. And the street scene and plans do not accurately show the changes in levels that have taken place. The ridge height of the garage would be much higher and more imposing than indicated as that level that you see in the photographs is just the finished floor level. The height and bulk proposed is totally inappropriate for an ancillary building. The officer has acknowledged that the terrace creates overlooking, but I disagree that it would not be harmful because due to the level and proximity, those using this terrace, as I say, have a restricted view into my client's property and this loss of privacy is just not acceptable. So no information in terms of the impact of the development on drainage has been provided. Given the change in levels and the increase in hard standing, a drainage scheme should have been submitted as part of the application. The extent of the raised terrace is excessive and out of keeping with the surroundings and the terrace adds considerable height and bulk to the rear elevations of Fairgon, resulting in an overbearing impact. And no screening has been provided to the south where my client lives, which is inconsistent because there's been provision along the north there. The relocated garage is now brought closer to the boundaries of the site and therefore to the Spring, impacting on the health of the mature boundary hedge there. Natural light entering and the outlook from my client's property would be affected. The sighting is to allow for vehicles to turn and use it. However, if the gate piers had been put in the original position, it wouldn't need to be moved. And so overall, I feel that this is contrary to policy and disagree with the officer's recommendation and urge members to reject this application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Members, any clarification points? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair. You mentioned in your last sentence, this was contrary to policy. Which policy are you quoting?
I feel DM15, DM16 and DM17, because of the overlooking loss of privacy, increased noise and disturbance from those that would be using the terrace so close to my client's property.
And you also mentioned the garage, I think?
Yes.
Which policy again?
Again, those same policies.
Thank you very much.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any further points of clarification from Ms Webb? Councillor McLean?
Yeah, I have one more if I may, Chair. On the bottom of page 223, which shows the side of the terrace, it shows a white... Looks like a door. Is that a door? Do we know? Or is it something leaning against the wall? Maybe the officer could answer. I don't know.
Well, we will come to that in a minute perhaps. So I think that's it. Ms Webb, for you this afternoon. Thank you very much for coming along, but obviously still stay to listen to the discussion on it. So we move now to the report. Rose, could I just clarify one thing? So this is our committee, this application, because of the requests of Shedfield Parish Council. And we do have their points on page 207, but normally we see their letter. And then also councillor Fern, one of the ward councillors, has requested it to be heard at committee, but there's nothing in the report from councillor Fern. I know you've taken it over, so it's difficult, but I'm just flagging up that in future the committee would like to see the parish council's letter and the ward councillor's request. You can't... I understand the difficulty.
I can't comment. I do apologise and I will make a note of it.
Yeah, and there's one objection as well. Right, so councillor Bentuck?
I think councillor Fern's made objection was more to do with the existence of a track, which I have now discussed, and I'm referring that to Hampshire County Council.
Right, but I mean...
Which was considered not to be part of this application.
His request might have been the only request, in which case it would have been brought to committee when he'd already sorted the issue out.
Well, he hasn't... No, he hadn't sorted it out. Nothing's happened about it until... I thought this would be part of the case as well and it's not here. So I did ask planning why it wasn't... You know, why it didn't appear. And I've received replies that it doesn't apply. I think it is mentioned somewhere in these pages. Yeah, it was on page 209, under highways and parking, the third paragraph.
Okay, well, I know he's your ward councillor, councillor Bentuck, but you don't have to defend him. But normally, we see the request in the report, but we have had to change offices because of illness, so that's probably where the omission has occurred. Councillor Rutter? Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chair. When a councillor brings something like this to a committee, the councillor should be here to put their case. I think that's just common politeness to the committee.
Yeah, he works all day and I'm sure he's listening, so, you know, I'm just asking for the report.
And also, you know, when a parish council objects, well, you'd expect them to send a representative.
Anyway, I think we've resolved that issue, but I'm just making a point really that in future, could they be there?
Yeah, noted. Yeah, noted. Thank you Chair.
So let's move on to the report. So questions on anything, because it's only two pages, 208 and 209. Councillor Rutter?
Can I just ask whether the topography of the land was properly taken into account when this was first given planning permission?
I can only assume that it was councillor. Unfortunately, I was not the case officer for that application either. As a statutory requirement, we do go out on site. It was likely one of the questions that was considered by the original case officer and was approved as such with a view of the level changes on site. However, I can't comment as to why it's been significantly changed because of it.
Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chairman. Has any officer been on site since these changes, retrospective changes have come into being? I'm looking at the garage. I went out to the site yesterday and viewed it and unfortunately, the photograph on page 230 does not help because what I saw from there, I looked to be a continuous wall. Now, if you look at the diagram on page 215, it has like a small porch way set back on the left-hand side as you look at it. That didn't appear to me to be the case. I would welcome, quite honestly, a site viewing on this one because the structure that is there is very dominant.
You need a second, are you offering to second councillor Cunningham? So we'll have a vote. A site visit has been proposed. Could I just be clear what we would be going out to look at?
Chair, I'm sorry for butting in. Councillor McLean did have his hand up actually before councillor Reed. I don't know, do you have a relevant question about this councillor McLean?
Of course.
Thank you.
Right, let's just park the site visit.
I thought the chairman's the chairman, not yourself councillor Rutter. Looking at the photographs on page 223, we see that the terrace is retrospective. But if where the actual height of the little French windows that open out onto the terrace, if the terrace plan had been made at the time, or hadn't been, you would have walked out and fallen probably the best part of two metres. Now, that tells me that this terrace was planned right from the very start. And as this is a retrospective application, I wonder what the service lead's view of that would be because there's something actually particularly flagrant going on here.
Yeah, what I want to actually make a point of is one of the reasons why I seconded the motion for a site visit. I've seconded the motion because I was reading on page 208 and 209 that the width of the balcony or the width of the elevated area was no more than the width of a footpath. So I look at that and then I looked at page 223 and that, I have to say, that that looks like a lot wider than a footpath to me. It looks like a balcony, so encourages a lot more overlooking of the house to the south. Those doors, when they open out, do not open out on a small, thin footpath.
Could we please avoid just all calling out because it's making the meeting rather difficult? So the reason that you are suggesting the site visit councillor Reed is to look at the width of the terrace going around the house?
Well, that actually wasn't mine, but I'm quite happy to adopt it from further up the line.
I do think we need a justification.
However, what I would like to know is the garage, because of its replacement, as to whether it is being constructed as per plan? To me, it didn't look like it is.
Well, are they not asking for approval in this application? So that's, you know, it isn't identical.
Sorry Jim. When I looked, unfortunately, on page 230, the top bar of the fence obscures the wall of the garage. And when I looked at it, it looks as though the whole of that width length is one wall. It's not set back for the porch way as on the planning application. So is it being constructed? It's retrospective.
Okay.
Is it being constructed in accordance?
The material planning harm there would be...
Well, the fact that it is going to be extremely overpowering upon the neighbouring property and when you look at the original structure, the current structure, it is exceedingly high and it doesn't respect neighbouring parties.
And that is the reason that you're seconding the site visit request?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll move to the vote. So all those in favour... A site visit has been requested and seconded. All those in favour of a site visit, please show.
Six members Chair.
And those against?
And three against.
So there will be a site visit and I don't think we're in a position to give a date today.
No Chair, we'll have to look at committee availability as one of the issues, as to which committee, future committee we can bring this.
And that will come to the next planning committee?
No, not necessarily Chair. It might be the meeting after that, so I can't pin down a committee date at this stage because we've got a workflow of items for committee and therefore we'll... I mean, obviously, we want to get it to you as quickly as possible and then we'll book the preemptive visit in advance of the next committee we can bring it to.
It won't be a preemptive, will it?
It would revert to a preemptive Chair in advance of bringing it back to a future committee. So you're actually deferring it today for consideration at a future meeting and prior to that meeting, we'll arrange a preemptive site visit for you.
And should you wish to speak again, or if anyone wants to speak, you may do so, even if you're saying the same things. Councillor McLean?
Thank you Chairman. Are we proposing a stop notice between now and that meeting? Because work is progressing on the site, it would appear.
Well, I don't think there's anything to stop.
Chairman, that's something outside of this meeting, but those works are being undertaken at the owner's own risk, aren't they?
Comes under enforcement, so... Okay, so that meeting is... That application is deferred for a site visit and will come back to a future meeting of the planning, development and control. Thank you very much for coming along today.
Thank you, thank you.
Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned.
... various stations. Are we happy to go straight on?
Yes.
Yes, I think so.
Yes, okay. So thank you Rose, thank you for all your stepping in. And good afternoon Marge. Yeah, well, yeah, we've just deferred...
Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned. 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 Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned.
Are we ready?
I have a couple of photos and a few others.
Do you think you could put your microphone on, Mr Farah? But if you, if you, the red button at the bottom, is it Mr Farah?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry, if you could say that again about your photos?
I have an email which I sent to planning last night, but obviously, I missed them, concerning a very late addition on your internet, on your website, regarding a plan which we weren't able to open until yesterday morning. And I have, you know, there's a couple of things outstanding which haven't been answered. I wonder whether I could, these could be answered today? Because they're quite relevant to the windows, the height of the windows in this application. And also, I have a couple of photos as well, large ones, which I'd like to...
I need to take advice from officers here. And still, Marge, was there something added late last night?
There was a phone call and an email last night around five o'clock, but as it was today, I figured it's best to discuss these matters compared with the...
Catherine, do you want to? Or Julie?
Chairman, I think the thing that's been added to the website is covered in the update sheet. So, Marge has picked that up, that we've received update to condition three with an amended sectional drawing, which she will show during her presentation. So, I think probably what we should do now is hear Marge's presentation and then have the public speaking. We can't have photos handed round on the shop floor now, Chair, because your officers won't have had time to review those. We do need those in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, I think you already have, you already have them.
Yes, Catherine?
Chair, thank you. I'm just reiterating what Julie has said, literally, there are procedures in place and we need to maintain those procedures for good reason. And I would suggest that you hear the presentation first, which may actually answer some of the questions that have been put to the floor.
So, that's what we're going to do, Mr Farah. We're going to listen to the case officer, Marge Ballinger's presentation, and then we will move over to public speaking. And you are the first speaker anyway.
Thank you.
Mr Farah, could you just switch off your microphone now, please? Thank you.
Because it stops the sound. I'm just about to turn mine off. So, right, we are just about to start agenda item 14, which is 21/01836/HOU. This is a first-floor rear extension of re-submission of 20/02156/HOU at 16 Cold Harbour Close in Wickham. The case officer is Marge Ballinger. And Marge, when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, this is a re-submission of the planning application that was permitted in January. I wanted to note on the update sheet that there was a section drawing that has been replaced, amended. It appears that the scan was slightly off, showing a variation in the measurements. So, the one that's now been switched out, which is similar to the original, has the correct measurement. This slide shows the relationship of the site within the area. It is north-west of Wickham Village and along the edge of the settlement boundary here. Slide three here is a closer view of the site itself. And it shows relationship to the dwellings both west and east. It's approximately nine metres from number 15. The proposal is approximately nine metres from number 15 and approximately four metres from the boundary east to number 17. These are photos of both the front and the rear elevations. The ground level changes toward the rear slope away from the dwelling, just wanted to point that out. It is assumed that the previous planning permission for a two-store extension has Here are drawings of the rear elevation from the original, the approved and the proposed. The variances show that the scheme previously had an approved clipped roof within this elevation. And the proposed is to increase it to a full gable. This is the east elevation toward number 17. Here's the original ground floor extension. The approved was the two-store extension with a clipped rear hip gable. And it had two side-facing windows, which we obscure-glazed as a condition. And the proposal, again, is to increase the rear roof to another approximately 2.15 metres, remove the side-facing windows and install two roof lights into the roof slope. I'm just checking, making sure I didn't skip a slide. Did you, did anyone notice that? I'm going to just jump back really quickly, make sure I've got all the slides. Showed that one, okay? Yep, okay, sorry. I don't know if it was the mouse, I'll use the arrows from now on. So, this is the west elevation toward number 15. No changes here, other than the views visually of the roof ridge extending 2.15 metres. The same side-facing window is to be inserted as the previous. The ground floor plan is approved as the previous application. It's approximately 2.1 metres square off of an existing rear bedroom. And it will be used as a study and a bedroom suite off of the existing bedroom. This is a proposed section of the drawing, demonstrating that the roof lights will be above head height. This image is from the previous section drawing and the height will be similar to the proposed elevations. So, this height measurement from Florida to the ridge line is eight metres, approximately similar to the proposed elevations. But this demonstrates that the eaves height will be same as the similar, approximately five metres from base up to the existing eaves. And the roof lights will be approximately 75 centimetres away from the edge of the roof slope and measure 55 by 70 centimetres. These are photos taken from a previous site visit from November of last year. The left photo shows, was taken from inside number 17 within their ground floor lounge. The right photo demonstrates another view from their patio that extends full width of their rear elevation. And I also wanted to note that the existing trees in the photo are within the rear garden of number 16, sorry, the proposal site. These are further photos from the rear elevation of number 17. The photo on the left is closer again toward the patio, showing the degree of rear garden space toward the proposal site. And the photo on the right shows a photo closer to the boundary of number 16. These photos are taken from, well, various viewpoints. The photo on the left is from the rear garden of number 18. Back toward the proposal site, which is behind this tree. And the photo on the right is taken from number 16's first floor, existing first-floor window, out toward the boundaries of number 17 and 18. As you can see, this is the ground floor extension that the proposal will be built upon. And just wanted to point out that these are from November 2020. I did not obtain more recent photos. Photos seven and eight show the relationship of number 16 to the dwelling on the west with the existing shrubs and trees and the distance of approximately, what did I say? Nine metres, I believe, to over 10 metres from the proposal site, then no impact is expected to the neighbouring site on the west. These photos were taken from the more public views and are recent. The photo on the left is a view from the corner of Cold Harbour, as it comes around number 17's garden. And you can see that some of the proposal will be visible from this viewpoint. Number 10 is also from a similar viewpoint, only closer to the proposal site. And again, the proposal site will be visible from the more public views. Further photos are from the street side toward the proposal site. Number 11 will be difficult to see the proposal as built due to it setting back from the side elevation and down from the ridge. Photo 12 is a view from further back into the close. And just to demonstrate the view that I took from September 2021. And I just wanted to reiterate the changes to this application from the previous. It is to extend the ridge to a full gable height instead of a clipped view, remove the side-facing windows and install two roof lights. And that's, that's the difference between these two. The same materials as the existing are proposed. To conclude, the proposal does not have a significant or detrimental impact on the character and appearance of the area or the residential amenities of occupants on adjacent properties and is therefore in accordance with policies and the development plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. There are just a few items that I forgot to mention because somehow the beginning of the meeting changed. Fire precautions, there is no practice planned, so if you hear the fire alarm, then it is for real. And please follow instructions as to exiting the building. And the assembly point is in the gardens of Abbey Gardens next door, Abbey House. Please turn your mobile phones to off or to silent. And there was another one as well. What was the other one? Oh, yes, this is being recorded, sorry. This is being recorded and livestreamed. No doubt, lots of people are listening to it. And there is a video recording being made and that will be uploaded to the council's YouTube after the meeting, where it will remain. So, we move now to the public speaking. So, I've asked for advice, legal advice on this matter. And Mr Farah, you are the first public speaker as an objector. And because you feel that information was loaded late and you didn't have time to assimilate it, I will allow you an extra two minutes. So, instead of your three minutes, I'm going to allow you five minutes, should you need it, so that you can address whatever you want to say. I hope that's acceptable to you?
That's very kind of you. I hope I won't. Do I turn this on?
Yes, yes, otherwise we won't hear you.
That's kind of you. I hope I won't need five minutes.
So, when you start, you have three minutes once you start speaking. That's just a practice. So, if you're ready, you are, yeah. So, you have, you have five minutes, sorry, you have five minutes.
I'd like to pick up on a point that was made. The new plan removes all the dimensions that were on the old plan. And it further says that the height of the first floor is to be determined. So, we still don't know what that is going to be. This is very relevant because in an email that I had from Mrs Ballinger, which I have here on the 4th of August, it says, "I have obtained a section drawing demonstrating the position of roof lights. The roof lights are 2.4 metres above the floor. We don't know how high the floor is going to be." "And set above the eaves by 75 centimetres as an external measure, so out of any head height views." Well, if, if, if that was the case then, that was when we knew how high the floor was going to be. Now, we don't know how high the floor is going to be. And I don't know when we will know how high it's going to be. So, we cannot abide by both of that 2.4 metres above the floor and 75 centimetres above the eaves. I think a stipulation would have to be that irrespective of how high it is above the eaves, that the roof lights are 2.4 metres above wherever the floor is going to be. Are you with me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. "The height and bulk of this large proposed first-floor extension directly overlooks number 17," that's our house, "number 17's living rooms, bedroom and rear garden. Councillor Rutter previously said at the last meeting that screening is important for neighbour amenity. There is no tree foliage screening to obscure this from number 17, none whatsoever. Photo one," that's my photo number one, "shows the flat roof to the existing ground floor extension already clearly visible. So, anything built on top of that must be visible as well. Councillors Evans and Clear visited number 17, but councillor Evans said at the first meeting, 'There is quite a lot of screening.' And later said, 'There is a substantial tree planting between them.' Councillor Clear said, 'I do understand they might be overlooked or whatever, but there is a lot of screening which I do feel will obscure the extension.' This was untrue and unjust to us and misleading to the committee, making the decision unsafe. Notably, nobody else claimed that there was screening for number 17. The rear of 17 faces in a west-south-westerly direction towards the side of number 16. And my photo number five shows the rear of number 17 with the sun creating a pyramid-shaped shadow..." pyramid-shaped shadow on the side, from the side of number sixteen going up to the gutter level of number seventeen. The high and long first floor extension roof would run parallel to number seventeen, so the extra overshadowing from the sunlight during afternoons and early evenings will without doubt cover much larger areas of our garden house. The current report says requesting additional sunlight assessments is not required, but the January planning meeting report makes no mention of sunlight assessments. If a true assessment had been made, it would have shown this as a genuine concern. The latest gable end proposal unnecessarily increases the roof ridge to a massive 9.5 metres long, and that's measured from the scale plans, making the roof even bulkier and certainly increasing overshadowing, which was one of the original complaints anyway. The origin of the no objection letter from number fifteen received by post six weeks after the closing date is dubious, and I have documentary evidence here proving where it came from. It is important, as Councillor Evans said, as number fifteen had no objections, then the application should be passed. However, owing to its position, number fifteen is not affected. I also have documentary evidence here disproving the false allegations made by number sixteen regarding our tree felling to make the proposal more visible. Misleading comparisons have been made to other extensions, but most are single-story and the two-story one at number fifteen cannot even be seen from near neighbours. No other extensions intrude and affect neighbour amenity as this one will. The entire proposal requires another assessment, not just the changes. This version is more intrusive and overbearing than the original. We ask that it is declined as it will greatly affect our neighbour amenity, intrude on our privacy and cause even more overshadowing through loss of sunlight. Contrary to the first planning report. Chair, sorry to interrupt you. Five minutes is past, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Faro. Thank you. Then we have, oh, we don't, there might be questions or clarification from the committee. Councillor McLean.
Thank you, Chair. You said in your report that you had sent in a number of.
Councillor McLean, do you think you could talk into the microphone? Thank you.
You said in your report that you'd sent in a number of photographs. May I ask when they were sent in to us? Before the closing date, together with my objection. Right. Do we have those photographs that we can view if they've been sent in as evidence by?
Chairman, they came in as part of the representations received from neighbours. So they've all been published to the website as part of this case as they've gone along. I probably can see if I can find them, Chair, but we weren't asked to, you know, they're part of the public file that's available online.
I think we've had this sort of situation before where there is some confusion. A member of the public sends it in thinking it will be given as part of the presentations we have here, but as before, it hasn't.
Well, Councillor McLean, you've heard what Mrs. Pennick said. Unless there's a request for it to be shown at the meeting, then it just remains on the website, which they are there.
But I do have them here if you want them.
I don't think, I'm looking at the legal, I don't think it is our normal practice to accept photographs at the meeting.
It's not normal practice to accept photographs at the meeting. And whilst I'm sure Mr. Faro's photographs are a hundred percent fine, legitimate, they do need to be sent into the planning department first for them to have a look at before they're presented to the planning committee and it's part of the planning committee's process.
But they were presented, photos were presented at the last meeting and I didn't ask for them to be presented.
Without a request, I believe. I don't know. Was the request there for it to be shown at the meeting?
No, Chair, no, not at all. And we haven't, as we haven't been asked to display them, we haven't, you know, it was of course Mr. Faro's right to submit them with his representation to show what he believed would be the impact, but we haven't been asked to verify that and present them to you today, so we haven't carried out that exercise, Chair.
Normal practice, Mr. Faro. Could I just clear up one thing as well before we move on to the parish council? A number of us were present at the last application, which Mr. Faro has referred to. And indeed, he has quoted members of the committee, including myself, as to what they said. That is not associated with this application because this application is about the, there is an extent planning permission, so that's the sort of thing in the past. And this application is about the change of the obscure glazed windows and the roof, the change in the roof, I think mostly, but Marge will correct me if I'm wrong. That's correct, yeah. So there are a number of members who are new entirely to the application and those who were present and voted will be looking at this application as a separate application in its own right. So the next one, next speaker is the parish council representative, Councillor Lorraine Rappe. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, everyone. Whilst in the past there has been different applications for extensions in this close, this one is different and it caused the parish to record its objection back in 2020. This is a large, overbearing first floor extension, both in height and length, and simply put, it's a huge bulk. It's overlooking neighbouring homes, but in particular number seventeen, i.e. Mr. Faro's and Mrs. Faro's home. The current application from number sixteen Cold Harbour Close is now extending its rooftop, creating a new proposed gable end. This is compared with your previous application considered in January this year. The closest development was originally designed to stagger both layouts of gardens and actual homes, so there wouldn't be any intrusions to any of them. But now the back garden of number seventeen, together with its main living room and bedrooms, will have an extremely unattractive view of the applicant's home, looking out to what will be a long extended rooftop. The proposed extension isn't suitable for this location. As a reminder and for your observation, there are submitted photos from the homeowner at number seventeen that depict a reduction of light and causing increased overshadowing at certain times. The extension will further deprive the homeowners to their forward-looking views, which is currently their situation. In addition, and important to note, that there is no trees or screening that currently exist. And they were made, and I hear Councillor Evans comment about comments made in January, but in fact they should be taken into account because the photos I have just seen do slightly mislead how the foliage will sort of camouflage or not camouflage in this case. There is no substantial tree planting whatsoever at number seventeen and screening isn't going to be possible. No foliage screening to actually put up new trees will take years to grow if that would be the only option left for the occupant at number seventeen. And it's not going to be feasible to do that. I think we all have experienced trying to grow plants and to cover things up. This won't happen. Due to the extremely heavy bulk of this extension, the Wicken Parish Council submitted its objection in 2020. When the revised application appeared, the same views and objection are still maintained by the parish here now in 21. It's felt this application should not have received any approval in January of this year. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Rappe. Excellently timed. Any questions, clarifications for Councillor Rappe? And I forgot to extend that opportunity to Mr. Faro, so we'll come back to you, Mr. Faro. But Councillor Rappe, first of all.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Rappe. The parish council's objection is to the approved, it appears to be to the approved extension, that we've already fought that battle. Do you have any specific objections to this particular application in front of us, which is the, just the increase in the slight roof and the roof lights instead of windows?
It was that it makes the extension longer in the way that's been devised and it still in fact is going to be a huge hulk and very unattractive. So similar sort of issues still are being maintained. Thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor Reed.
Chairman, it's not so much a question, it's just to note that the village design statement is 20 years old. Have the parish council plans to renew it, revitalise it?
I think we're just about embarking on looking parish plan. Yes.
I've got a question, Councillor Rappe. The parish council objection says the loss of green gaps between buildings. And I struggled over that one because I couldn't see what green gaps were being lost between buildings. Which building?
The gaps were more with the seventeen and sixteen rather than the eighteen and the sixteen. Just to try and remember.
Is it your opinion that this, the extension, which has already got permission, it is the roof? The roof is filling in the green gap or?
No, I think frankly what happened there, the clerk put in the same response that was put in in December last year.
Right.
And wasn't extended with this newer point, so it was too late to change it once it'd been seen.
Thank you. Were there any clarification questions for Mr. Faro? I'm so sorry that I forgot this. The speaker before, Councillor McLean.
Thank you. I guess it's probably for both of you actually, but there is already an approved application for an extension. What this is looking to do is add, if you like, a triangle to it. So I don't quite know how to phrase the question, I'm sure the Chair will put me right, but is the objection you have to the original application, which we can't talk about today, or is it to the new application for what is relatively small triangle on the end? Thank you.
Yeah, the triangle on the end increases the roof ridge to 9.6 metres. It increases it by well over two metres over what was passed at the beginning of this year. And the reason that we're objecting to that is that the extension itself will create extra, unfortunately, I can't show you this photo, but it proves it with the shadowing already there. It will create, will at least double the shadowing we now get by extending the roof. So instead of coming down and being half-hit, it comes all the way across. That will increase the bulk of the roof and increase the shadowing. I mean, I've got photos here which demonstrate that with overlays, but unfortunately I can't show you. But I'd love to show you the one with the existing shadowing from the sun taken in March this year, but.
Sorry, I can't see it either, but just look, all I can go by is the drawings I've got in front of me.
Yes.
That says that that extension is adding 2.15 metres to it, which is just over six foot.
Yes. Yeah, well, yeah, it's, two metres is six foot six, isn't it? So, yeah, but I mean, that adds an extra, it fills in the triangle and increases the shadowing.
Thank you. That's the end of the public speaking. Marge, is there anything you wish to update us on from what you've heard?
Yes, please. I'm not sure if this is visible again. The section drawing that's within your packets. What page is that? Well, I have page nine. I don't have it in the packet. So page 251. Page 251. The section drawing was amended as it was pointed out to me by Mr. Faro that if you measure the ridge to the top of the ridge line, to the most highest part of the ridge line, there was a difference in its dimension as compared to the proposed drawings. So it has been discovered that when it was scanned over, there was a slight discrepancy with the scanning settings. So the drawing was amended to demonstrate that the height of the proposed, all proposed drawings and the section drawings are up to eight metres and the ridge line is approximately five metres up to from the ground level. So those measurements are all now accurate. And that was the only reason why we've changed out, just to show the accuracy as it needed to be demonstrated, that the roof light was 75 centimetres from the ridge.
Thank you.
Sorry, Chair, I'm slightly confused. Could you just run those numbers again about what the difference was?
251, we're looking.
Yeah, I've got that in front of me, yes. I just wanted to know what the differences were.
The difference of the previous section drawing is irrelevant because it was scanned incorrectly. The height of the overall proposal is eight metres, the bridge at ridge and the eaves measures to be about five metres.
Thank you. And page 251, does that show us, Mr. Faro was concerned about the height of the first floor? So does that show us the height of the first floor?
Out of all the measurements that I reconfirmed, it's difficult to measure internal due to those are building regs and we don't, do not necessarily have the floor plans showing internal heights. I can only assume that if the eaves is five metres from ground level and the section drawing shows slightly above that, that I know that it will be over head height because it will be over the two-metre measurement. So whether or not it's 2.4 metres exactly is not something that we can control, but I can control the 75 centimetres away from the eaves.
Is Mr. Faro concerned about people being able to look out of the windows? Is that a likely? Is Mr. Faro concerned about people being able to look out of the two proposed new windows which are in the roof slope? And is that a likely scenario?
Yes, there is concern, but it's unlikely due to the height.
And then Mr. Faro has also brought up shadowing and sunlight assessment.
I would just comment that direct sunlight shadowing on a building is a particular time of day or the particular time of year. And although we do anticipate the naturalized assessment with overshadowing, it's not necessarily whether or not a building can achieve direct sunlight at a particular time of day. So therefore we assess it on the distance of the proposal from the rear elevation of the building to number seventeen.
It does tell us the distance to the extension. That's on page 252. And that's 24.5 metres from number seventeen rear elevation to the proposed extension.
That's correct.
Yeah. So would you expect there to be substantial shadowing from that distance?
No, although there is a shadow on the building at a particular time of day as expressed in the photos that you can see online. Again, direct sunlight is different than what we assess with the achievement of sunlight.
And final point that I've written down is that the city council have, and this is perhaps for the service lead to answer, have accepted a letter six weeks after the closing date.
I can comment on that.
Okay.
Any comment, whether objections are proposed, can be received until the planning decision is accepted. So that, it obviously came after the publicity period in Christmas time, but I did receive it before the committee date.
We do try and be as helpful as we can to members of the public. Okay, so anything else, Marge, that you wanted to bring up?
No, thank you.
Let's look at the report. And shall we look at items on page 238? Principle of development and design and layout. Any questions on that? If not, oh, sorry, councillor Reed.
Thank you Chair, I'm obviously just out of sight, off your line of sight. Could you just remind the members where this application site is in relation to the South Downs National Park?
Some considerable distance. The South Downs National Park goes through the north of Swanmore. And then the only bit in Wickham which is in the national park is West Walk, which is in the Forest of Beer. And that's, I don't know, two or three miles. Am I correct in my assessment?
Can I ask the officer to answer that question please?
Pardon?
Can I ask the officer to answer that question? Do you mind? Thank you.
Unfortunately, I don't work in South Downs, but I do check the boundaries. I did say that the development is on the boundary of, of the countryside, but not South Downs. This is still within the countryside setting of Winchester.
Yes, of course, we shouldn't have an officer answer, but I am actually on the South Downs National Park.
No.
I do know, but...
Councillor, I realise it, I'll have to check with you afterwards.
Yeah, absolutely.
Sorry Chair, the only reason for the question is that you have a boundary marker alongside the church.
I'm sorry, what church are you referring to? I'm not sure where that is in relationship to this proposal. I know this is north east, northwest of the village.
As the crow flies, probably about 1.5 miles.
Okay, so I think we've done those sections. And now we're looking at impact on the character of the area and impact on neighbouring amenities. Page 238, 239. Councillor Rutter?
Thank you Chair. Councillor McLennan also had his hand up, I just thought I'd let you know.
Okay.
Mr Farrow was, was kind enough to remember that I'd questioned screening and whether or not that could be conditioned when the initial application came through. And I'm asking again, that there doesn't seem to be anything about screening in here. And quite often we do condition screening or ask that, that various bits of planting should be done. Is, is that possible in this case or, or not? Thank you.
Chairman, I think you have to have regard to what this committee has already granted planning permission for. And I think it would be unreasonable to add a requirement that, that we'll, in terms of what we're looking at now, we're looking at moving two windows on a side elevation at first floor up into the roof and taking a quite, a clipped end, a half-hip gable to a full clip. And I, I just don't think that would be reasonable, Chair, in my view, to impose a condition on other components of this that already have planning permission without such a requirement.
Fair enough, thank you.
Any further questions? Councillor McLennan, councillor Reed.
Thank you Chair. As overviewing of neighbourhood properties is very important here, is it reasonable that we put in a, a condition against things like Juliet balconies that all of a sudden spring up on properties after they've been finished? To ensure that isn't done as part of somebody just thinking, I'll just put a Juliet balcony on it? Can we condition that?
Sorry, I can't get my microphone ready. Councillor, you need to actually look at the planning application before you today. And if a Juliet balcony isn't actually proposed, then we are unable to condition something on the maybe and perhaps that it could happen in the future.
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, but my worry is we, we're seeing a number of retrospective applications where these things are suddenly done because we didn't condition something.
Again, it's an if and a maybe and it isn't actually in the planning application before you today. So therefore it's not a material planning application that we need to be able to consider.
Councillor Reed?
The last sentence of the impact on the first paragraph refers to the roof lights. And my initial question being the distance from the boundary of the national park, as to whether in this case any shields are being placed on those lights. Otherwise, again, you will have beams of light going up into the air on the edge of the national park.
Chairman, I don't, I think given the context of this in a, in a built-up residential area, I don't think that would be a reason to refuse or require something that's beyond our policies at the moment. The national park have a dark skies reserve and that substantiates the principle of, of requiring shielding to those type windows when it's justified. I certainly know that's an issue for members and it's something we'll talk about in terms of emerging local plan and policy. But it's not something I believe would be reasonable or justified or proportionate and meet the test nationally in terms of imposing conditions on such requirements, Chair.
Can it not be placed as an informative?
There's no reason, Chair, why if the committee wanted to make a suggestion to the applicant that they consider some sort of film or blackout shutter or something. But that wouldn't be enforceable and it would just be a recommendation, Chair. An informative rather than a recommendation, I should say. Thank you.
I think we've done the impacts. So anything else, that's landscape and trees, highways and parking, anything under other matters, equality or the conditions? And have we got informatives? No. What, should we have an informative about the working? Oh, we have, we have, yeah. We have got informatives, yeah. I'm just checking that we had one on in working hours, but we have. So there being no questions on that, we're into debate. Councillor Cunningham?
Thank you Chair. Well, I think at the outset, this is, well, for me anyway, personally, it seems to be straightforward. The principle of the first floor and ground floor extension has already been established by previous consent. Therefore, what we're really discussing here is purely the change in the gable end from this hip half, from a half-clipped to a gable. Six foot six inches in my view, I work it out. Now, I don't think that that actually does cause any harmful impact on the overshadowing and overbearing of the residential amenities of number 17. And I think that the roof design change also, that doesn't have any adverse impact on number 16 or number 18 either. Sorry, on number 18. So I'm going to support the officer's recommendation and approve. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reed?
Thank you Chair. In a sense councillor Cunningham has covered it. In the past, by putting a half-hip in on a structure, has reduced the physical appearance of it. In this case, it's going the opposite way around, it will make it look that little bit much, much more bigger. And it will cast, if the, Mr Farrow is right, it will cast a shadow without a doubt and it'll be some six to eight feet longer than it would normally would. Normally, a half-hip is just to reduce the visual effect of the building itself. I can't find any planning reason to refuse this application, but I would like to see the, an informative with regard to the shields. Please.
Thank you Chair. Yes, just to follow up on councillor Cunningham, councillor Reed, I have the same opinion that I can see no reason from a planning perspective why we should not support this. I think the roof lights are a very sensible move as well. And they remove any overlooking from those windows. I find it sad that it's been brought to us and that the proposal's been put there to put the full gable because I can see no benefit in terms of the building and living in it from doing that. And I do see that it does cut out some light at certain parts of the day. So I find it disappointing it's got to this stage, but I see no reason why I can't support it from a planning perspective.
So I would like to finish up the debate. Just about the South Downs National Park, it is some distance from this site. And Cold Harbour Close, for those who don't know it, is full of very large houses all with perhaps lights blaring out of the top. So I think to put an informative on would be perhaps a bit restrictive for the applicant. I mean, between this application and the national park, there's the whole village development of Wickham. And so to sort of pick on this development, to screen the light out of the windows, I think would be unfair. Also, the, there are two windows being taken out of the side which directly look out onto number 17 at some distance, which were proposed to be glazed. And I would have thought that was an advantage to number 17, to have those windows higher up and in the roof. So that then that would take away, you know, anyone opening the windows down below and looking out. I don't know if they were conditioned not to be opening. And we've, we've heard that they, they will be, you know, at least two metres above height. So, you know, why would anyone want to look out of those two windows? So yes, the full gable will be bulkier. I would say that you wouldn't have too many views of it. Obviously 17 and 18 feel that they have a view, but they are both those buildings at some considerable distance in, it's in the report, from the application site. So the applicant already has permission to build what was given permission earlier on. And so I can't see a planning reason to refuse the full gable, full, no gable but a full roof, taking away the two windows that should, in the wall, and then putting them in the roof. So I know that there has been a lot of opposition. There were three neighbours objecting and the parish council. But three of the objectors don't even live in Wickham, they live some distance away. So I'm not sure why they are objecting, but they are allowed to do so, obviously. So I shall be voting in favour of this application. Is that the point that we're at? Looks like it. So this application has been recommended for approval. All those in favour of approving this application, please show. Against?
Eight members, eight members for Chair, none against and one abstention.
Thank you. So that application has been approved. Thank you very much. And we'll have just a short gap while we move on to the last agenda item. Members, do you want a break or are you happy to go on and finish? Break?
Yep.
Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned. 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 Please hold, your meeting has been temporarily adjourned.
Shall we, um, deal with the last item? Agenda item fifteen. This is the confirmation of tree preservation order two-two-nine-nine, which is land at the old courthouse, main road, Hersley, and land at eighty-four main road, Hersley. And the case officer is John Barclay. Good afternoon.
Thank you Chair.
And when you're ready, we're ready to hear your presentation.
Thank you Chair. Good afternoon councillors. I'm here today to seek confirmation of TPO two-two-nine-nine. This was made to protect two U-trees, a group of two U-trees, in the properties eighty-four main road and the old courthouse in Hersley. We are seeking confirmation as one letter of objection was received. The council originally decided to make the provisional TPO as we received a section two-one-one notice, which, where there was a proposal to remove both of these mature trees. Following a temporary assessment on the trees, they were deemed worthy of tree preservation order, so we made the decision to place a provisional TPO on these trees. So the summary of objection, objections that were received, in summary, so the trees do not contribute to the visual amenity or character of this conservation area. There were concerns about the potential, potential structural damage caused by the overgrowing root system of these trees. In a recent storm, branches fell from the trees which could have caused property damage, injury or death. And lastly, these trees dropped copious amounts of berries, and there are also bird droppings, so this is a health and safety issue for the children and pets. So our response to those objections, trees are visible from a number of viewpoints in Hersley Village, meaning they have a, a high amenity value and add to the arboreal, arboreal character of the area. In terms of the structural damage, no evidence has been received to date of any structural damage. If there are concerns, the owners can get a structural engineer to give recommendations, which then the tree officer can then consider. In terms of the concerns of safety, again, there was no arbicultural evidence provided which would lead us to believe that the trees have a major defect or dysfunction which would make them unsafe. And the issues reported regarding birds droppings and berries are naturally occurring issues which are very difficult to control, but the, the main thing that concerning these trees in terms of making a TPO is whether or not they have the required public visual amenity. So the trees are located in the heart of Hersley Village, one on each property in the courthouse and eighty-four main road, and they form a group of two trees that are very close to each other. This is a first view approaching, if you're coming from the south, going through Hersley Village, the trees on your, the trees are on your right there, and there's a clear view of them there. The, the value is only heightened in the winter when these are the kind of only evergreen trees in this kind of local landscape here with a lot of the trees being broad leaved, and they add to the variety of species that are in this area and the diversity. And again, this is more of a distant view, again approaching, approaching from the south. These trees can be clearly seen and, and have a high, high immunity value. And they are very prominent in, in the landscape, as we've shown in this, in this picture here. This is a view from Collins Drive. This is more of a partial view, but central government guidance states that trees only have to be partially visible for them to be considered for a TPO. And these are, this is another prominent view from, from Collins Lane. And this is a view next to the pub, the King's Head. This is from the, looking from the north. And again, the, the trees, the trees are prominent in the landscape above the rooftops, right next to the, the pub there. So in terms of summary of the government guidelines, no arbicultural or technical reasons have been provided for the felling of these trees, and there are no major defects which have been reported or noted. The Secretary of State's view is that the higher the immunity value of the tree or woodland, and the greater any negative impact of the proposed works would have on amenity, the stronger the reasons needed before consent is granted. And so our recommendation is to confirm TPO two-two-nine-nine. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we'll just have questions on any part of the report. Could I just ask, in the summary of objections, we have the bit about branches falling off the trees. Where are these trees sighted exactly? Are they likely to fall on top of property or people or children?
So they are situated quite, quite close to, to properties, but there was, there was no evidence that there were structural defects which would, would lead people to believe that the, the trees are about to, to drop further limbs, so we've, we've looked at that. And there's no evidence that's been provided that leads us, leads to the presumption that they are unsafe or structurally unsafe.
Thank you. And I might ask, but I don't want the answer, how do we know that the bird droppings come from people's, birds sitting in those trees? But I don't need the answer. Because we don't, do we?
Well, I mean, it could be birds flying over, it could be, I mean, they, it has to be admitted they would be attracted to the fruit there.
Right.
On those particular U-trees, although that enhances their wildlife value as well.
Yeah. And that's just a certain time of year anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. Any further questions? Well councillor Reed?
You indicated that we're quite close to each other. I must admit from the photographs supplied, it looks like one tree. How close actually are they?
They, they are within a few metres of each other, so they are very clustered together within, within a group of two trees. It is quite hard to make out in the photos, but there are two trees very close together forming a group.
And as a rider to that, that doesn't affect their health, being so close together?
Well, they're, they're, they're both quite significant trees, and they, they are quite even in terms of the, the competition there, so they're, they're kind of evenly matched. I don't really foresee one, one outcompeting the other.
Councillor Ealing?
Yeah, how old would you say these trees are?
I, I would say getting towards eighty, ninety years old, going towards the first, first century. But there's many years of life expectancy left in these trees, as U-trees are significantly long-lived and also native species, but yeah, significant life left in them, yeah, I would say.
Any further questions? No debate? So this tree preservation order has been recommended, what's the terminology for, is it approved? Confirmation, thank you. So all those in favour of confirming the TPO two-two-nine-nine, this is it?
unanimous Chair?
Thank you very much. So that TPO is confirmed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much John. And Ivan? Now we had hoped that we would have Nick Parker here in person, but he's not coming in, but he might join us on, oh dear, I can't think. What's the, WhatsApp or, I don't know. Oh, here he is, yes. Hello Nick.
Hi, pleasure to meet you.
Hi. Nice to see you. So you're leaving us this week?